Going to go ahead and call this meeting, a regular meeting of the Yosemite Community Colleges Board of Trustees for October 12th, 2022 to order, as well as calling to order the special meeting of the Yosemite Community Colleges Board of Trustees for October the 12th, 2022. And let's see, in-person attendance, call to order, roll call.
Student trustee, Maria Marquez. Trustee Antonio Aguilar.
Here.
Vice Chair Leslie Banks.
Here.
Trustee Nancy Henta.
Here.
Trustee Jenny Nicolau is participating via telephone, just so that everyone's aware. Trustee Nicolau, just wanted to, if you can, because you're participating via teleconference, if you can confirm that you can hear as well, you're able to hear the proceedings on this end until now, and that you have a copy of the agenda first.
I am here, and yes to all three.
Thank you. Trustee Milton Richards.
Here.
Trustee Margie Balkan.
Here.
Board Chair Darian Garrett.
Present.
Forum is established.
Okay, 2.2, roll call and establishment of form. You already did that, right? Okay, so we'll dispense with that. 2.3, statements of conflict. Does anyone wish to declare a conflict on any agendized item at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on to 2.4, public comment. Any member of the public wish to address the board on any item that is not on the agenda? Of course, we will have public comment when we reconvene for 5:30 as well. And then, as always, if it's an agendized item, we'll give appropriate time for the, when that agenda item is called for public comment as well. Seeing none, we will move now into closed session. That's section three of the posted agenda. The items are listed. The board will hear in closed session, along with the corresponding government code sections that give authority to the board to hear these matters in closed session. So with that, we will move into closed session. All right.
I saw that.
Okay, great. Let me go ahead and call the October 12th, 2022, regular meeting of the Yosemite Community Colleges Board of Trustees to order. And next item is pledge of allegiance to the flag on trustee Aguilas and the pledge of allegiance.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I want to personally thank trustee Aguilar for leading us on the pledge of allegiance. Okay, we'll move on now to 5.3, roll call and establishment of form.
And this goes for trustee Nicolau, who is remoting in from a location in Patterson. So trustee Nicolau, if you can confirm that you're able to hear as well, if you're able to hear the proceedings on this end until now, and do you have a copy of the agenda? Trustee Nicolau?
Yes, yes to all three.
Student trustee Maria Marquez.
Here.
Trustee Antonio Aguilar.
Here.
Vice Chair Leslie Banks.
Here.
Trustee Nancy Henta.
Here.
Trustee Milton Richards.
Here.
Trustee Margie Balkan.
Present.
Board Chair Darian Garrett.
Present.
Forum is established.
Okay, next item is 5.4, report out of closed session. We have no reportable items out of closed session. 5.5, changes in the order of business. First, for the record, item 8.7 has been pulled and will be brought back at a later date. Does any board member wish to, beyond that, change the order of business on the posted agenda? Okay, last chance, moving on. 5.6, through all minutes of September 14th, 2022. Board of trustees, special meeting. Okay, so usually give everybody a moment to reflect and review, but we've had a motion by trustee Dr. Milton Richards and trustee Margie Balkan to approve item 5.6. Is there any further discussion?
There's corrections. So on page six of 104 and page eight of 104, on item 1.1, it says, the minutes that you were provided, it says that there is, did not, the meeting did not include public, but it did include public, so I'm removing that.
So amend my motion to say with corrections.
I second that.
Okay, so with the amended correction, all those, oh, we got to do a roll call vote, sorry.
So we're just, we're taking both together?
Yeah.
Was your motion?
Yes.
To take both together?
Okay, so amend that. Your motion will include 5.7 as well, and you as well?
Yes.
Okay, so with that, second amendment, proceed to the roll call real quick.
Trustee Aguilar.
Hi.
Trustee Banks, or vice chair Banks, pardon me. Trustee Balkan.
Hi.
Trustee Henta.
Hi.
Trustee Richards.
Yes.
Trustee Nicolau.
Yes.
And Chair Garrett.
Yes.
The vote is seven zero, motion, Garrett.
Okay, moving on now to item 5.8, public comment. Does any member of the public wish to address the board on any item not on the posted agenda? Okay, so again, as always, say, when an agendized item comes up, we allow appropriate time for members of the public to comment on an agendized item.
Just for the record, there were none received yet.
Okay, thank you. Board committee reports. 6.1, board finance committee. Board finance committee did not meet, I know, sad but true. I know you're all heartbroken, but we'll move on to 6.2, board policy committee report. Turn that over to the policy committee chair, trustee Henta.
Thank you. Well, this was our first meeting since May, and we did meet this month, and you will hear later on some of the first reading items that we had. Trustee Banks just reminded me, and I decided to go ahead and explain a little bit. We are doing something a little bit different with the policies. As we get them in advance, we're going to go through them and make our suggested changes that'll go through and be received by Kimberly, and therefore, by the time the meeting comes on Monday, those changes from when we've read through them will be posted on the screen. So people will see our changes, and then they'll go to the full board for approval at the next, at that next board meeting. Like the ones we did last Monday will come for approval at this board meeting. Hopefully keeps things running because we value the area experts and those who show up. We value your time, and hopefully this helps keep things going.
Interesting. Thank you. Any questions for the chair of the policy committee? Okay, we'll move on now to 7.1, presentation, repopulating the rural plan of base Columbia College with Institute Junior College.
Go first. You fit as a nice meal.
You did, you did that in last, I think for all fairness, you should go.
If I could help you, Portis, if you can do the college report first.
Yeah, we'll do COVID.
Melissa.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. I'm Melissa Raby, the vice president at student services here at Columbia College, and Amy could not join us today, so she asked if I would give her report, so I will try to do justice on it. So for San Slaus County, they currently did not have an update on their website since the last board meeting, but they are at a 9.7% positivity test rate. And then, the California Department of Public Health indicates, though, that recently that there are 61 hospitalized, that's up 10-2, that's up 6 from the prior date total. And then, for Ptolemy County, we, that has been updated recently, and that is only a 6.1% positivity rate, which is a 3.7% drop since the last board meeting report, and there are zero current hospitalizations. And so, both counties are currently in the low range as far as the CDC community level. So the guidance, then, for the low community level is to stay up to date on vaccinations and boosters, maintain ventilation improvements, avoid contact with those with COVID, follow recommendations for isolation, follow recommendations for what to do if exposed, and if you are high-risk, talk to your healthcare provider for more information. Okay, and so the CDPH updates on masking, they shifted from a strong recommendation for masking for the general public in all indoor settings at all times to use the CDC community levels, which we just discussed, that all of us are on low. They have shifted to masks optional in correctional facilities, homeless shelters, emergency shelters, and cooling shelters. They have maintained requirements to mask in healthcare settings, and they have discontinued requirement for unvaccinated healthcare workers to test one or two times a week. So at YCCD, what we are continuing to do is provide the ventilation and purification units, mask if optional, home tests, we do have them both available at MJC, in the school offices and health services, and here at Columbia in our IMC, as well as our health office. We are continuing to do case contact notifications and guidance, both for employees and students, and we are continuing to report to the public how many outbreaks. And finally, looking ahead, there are various subdivisions. The B-A5 subvariant is dominant. I'm not going to read the rest of them to you, in front of you. But the message is to be flexible and ready to return to, for additional protections if necessary. Officials will continue to track the virus evolution, immunity status of population, and hospitalization rates. And the COVID booster recommendation currently by the CDC is to keep up to date, which now includes the primary vaccine series plus the updated booster. So are there any questions that I probably can't add to?
I think you did a great job. Thank you very much. Any questions? She's hoping not, but all right. Thank you, thank you again.
Okay, let's talk about enrollment and populating the campus. Good evening, board of trustees. Let's take a little bit futuristic look, but before we get into the future, let's just see a quick recap of where we are, what are we doing, and how we can move this train forward. Let's go to the next slide. This is the declining enrollment reporting from the chancellor's office. This is state-wide data, not for all the 72 campuses, it's only for those campuses which have reported. The places highlighted, system-wide headcount, you'll see percentage decline from spring '21 to spring '22, it's about 7.5% decline, and total decline, spring '22, '20 to spring '22, it's about 20% decline. Pretty large. Roll over to the next one. This is system-wide decline in all colleges. It is captured from our MIS system, so it's not only those colleges that are reported for spring, and that's why this is the academic year, 2021 to 2022, negative 4.4%, all California. 1920 to 2021, negative 16%, added up, about 21%. That's how the system has shrunk. The 100 students, we have 79 now. That's the system-wide decline. Roll over. MJC, how did we do? So when we look at ourselves, we are looking at California academic year 2021 to 2022, negative 4%, MJC climbed 1.9%, that's a switch of 6.3% in headcount. If you talk about fall 2028, '21 to fall 2022, that is this current fall, when we look at our numbers, our increase in FTEs is 13%, 13.2%. Let's roll. How do we compare with the neighbors? Because we hear all the time that, you know, neighbors, Merced, Delta, they might be doing lots. If you look here, we are head and shoulders above anybody else in Central Valley. Anybody who is close to us or equal to us is Bakerfield. Headcount 17%, FTEs 13%, nobody else is in double digits. Delta declined negative half percent, Clovis negative 4%, Merced 6%, West Hills 5.7%. And remember, West Hills is a much smaller base, small campus. We are talking about an 18,000-student campus, not a 5,000-student campus. So when you look at the percentage terms, 13% of 18,000 students, that's a substantial jump of change that we have attracted here. So it's probably one of the largest enrollment gain in Central Valley this fall, and most likely in the state that I'm aware of. Let's roll. Let's see how education is changing. Now, there was a time when education would be in free silos. You see on the left-hand side, traditional part, most of us around this table, we are one through this segment. We were educated, we went to employment, then we retired. Those of you who have retired, I have not retired yet, but we'll get there someday, hope. Future, education and employment, they are two parallel tracks, it is not two silos. Students would be in education, they jump off to employment, come back to education, go back up, and do the zigzag. Some of them, maybe by the age 90, would have enough money to retire, some maybe just keep on working through the rest of their lives, because working age is increasing. What does it mean for us? Do you want us a moment? I'll order it. That's a copyright, sorry. Let's roll. Well, now let's look at some data from our public high school graduations, San Slaus County versus California. How are we doing in San Slaus County? 2021 actual numbers, 7,725, state is 433,000 and change. On the top bar, you would see state is going down in this decade, from 433,000 to 379,000, a significant decline. San Slaus County closed at home. We climbed up to 2324, a peak of 8,158. From then on, after 2324, there's a sharp decline till 2930. Significance for us? Getting the pipeline to get new students into the system is going to become harder and harder, because we do not have people coming into that number as greatly as it used to be previously. Let's move. Some of the implications for us, how can we challenge this, this system, or attract more students to us? Move away from that traditional way of teaching in the classroom-oriented lectures. Collaborate with the business industry, can we move towards a workplace college? We know that many of the workplaces, like Gavel, they spend $600, $800 per employee training. How do we get a slice of that pie? We already have a relationship with Super U, we already have with Fito Lake, but for everybody else, can we have a workplace college, where we are not asking people to come to the college, but take the college to the workplace, in the business, in the industry, like we are doing with Amazon Prime? For those of you who are aware, we are one of the partners of Amazon Prime, and we are trying to grow that program as well. Learning at workplace also happens through apprenticeship programs. We have in San Slaus County about $2 million, sitting with Doris Foster's office, which says, we can spend that money for apprenticeship program. So we need to strengthen this relationship. If there is a need at the college in the industry, we can pay our students, we don't have to depend upon the payment from anybody else, not from our general fund, but it connects the students and attracts the students. So that's a focus that we have to have. And then, people are continuously moving between employment and education. CPL, credit for prior learning, becomes eternally important. We cannot tell somebody, whenever you come to college, start from ground zero. You get credit for what you are, and then you move on to the next tier. So those are some of the areas that we would like to do. How do you do that? Of course, for embracing the future, strengthening dual enrollment is a focus, we have to get stronger share of the pie, lower number of students that are coming out, we need to get more students. But multiple entry-exit points, what do I mean by that? You do not have to start learning on 11th January and 28th September, that's when our semester starts. How about if I'm an employed person, I lost my job, middle of March, I want to retool myself? I go to Western Governors, I go to a variety of places, go to MJC, we don't go to any of these places, because we don't start classes at that entering time. Break it down. Shorter classes. All our classes go for 16 weeks. Students don't necessarily need 16 weeks. How about a five-week class, a seven-week class? We do it in summer. We can have a similar situation in fall and spring, shorter-term classes, longer-term classes, all in a mix, so students can customize how they would like to get educated, when they would like to start, when they would like to finish. Those are all some things that we need to do. Improve online offerings and quicker turnaround types. Those are all the issues that we can have, so that we can attract more students in the classroom and give a more business-oriented classroom instruction when they are in college. Let's roll. This is a slide we need to dwell on for a little bit of time. There are two lines that you see here. The top line, that is persisted in all colleges, and persistence is defined as proportion of students who started this fall, fall of 2022, who are going to be seen in fall of 2023, accounting for those who have completed a degree or certificate and are going out. So if 10 of us are here, two of us get a degree or certificate, they are not counted in this, but out of the remaining eight, how many are re-enrolling in the following fall? In 2014-15, MJC, we were at 76%, that's out of 100 students, 76 would be there, 24, we lose. We didn't care at the time, because high school pipeline was great. We lose some, we fill it out, it's okay. Now, high school pipeline is becoming restricted. Fast forward 2021, same school enrollment, there is an MJC, it has come down from 76% to about 70%, a 6% drop. So out of 10 students, three would not come back here. When we talk about enrollment management, we are focusing on how do we get new students? But here, I am trying to challenge the campus by saying, do the simple math, MJC this term has 70,800 students or so. 30% of that is 5,400 students approximately, 5,200 students. They would not be here next year. We can spend a lot of money, we can do another free-for-me campaign, we can get another 1,000 students by giving free tuition. Or we can look at the students who are already here in our classrooms, they have already gone through all that mission cycle, everything, they are already with us. How do we focus on them and retain them? If we get half of them kept here, not lose this part, we're talking about 1,000 students. So what are we doing on that? Five areas that MJC is focusing on. Our priorities this year, and this, we talked about in institute day, when our students were there, we were asking them, what are your priorities? Our priorities are food insecurity. Who does it target? Students who are here. If they're not here, you do not know how we address food insecurity. Shelter insecurity, we address that part. Mental health, we address that part. Diversity, those of you who were there on 8th at our Hispanic Education Conference Day, you would have known what was diversity and demonstration and power of that. And a safe campus. Those are the five areas that we are trying to focus on, and we want to get deeper into this data system to see who are we using, what are their needs. Rather than telling a student, come here, MJC is free, can we change this whole conversation by saying, hey, you know what, Trevor, you already got 45 units, you're 15 units away, enroll in next fall. If you enroll in next fall, I'll give you a book grant of $500, so you don't have to spend money on the books. In order to do so, rather than waiting for middle of May, when you're already going out, by 15th March, can you commit yourself, come, enroll for fall, and secure a $500 book grant? Is that a better investment of our money than giving a free-for-me? Is that a better retention strategy that we're to do? So that's where we are in MJC. We need to dissect this data much more, because one thing that we have to keep in mind, that in California as such, we are getting into a very big-picture, peculiar situation. If you look at California's data, first time in the history of this state since 1940, California has lost population. This is again. And this losing of population, there are multiple factors. One is, one measure of population that we say is a total fertility rate, TFR. TFR in California was maximum in 2007, we had TFR of 2.2. In order to maintain a stable population, we need a TFR of 2.1. TFR means people born, people die, people migrating in, migrating out, all equation put together. Right now, our TFR is 1.6. 2.1 is required to maintain a stable state, we are at 1.6. Many reasons, some are great. Fewer teen pregnancy, great reason, but population decline is happening because of that. But students also are staying at home, they are not coming to the colleges. So our population is going to shrink, and we have to really refocus ourselves by saying, we would fill that 30% departure gap somehow. Let's focus on that, let's see how we can bridge that gap. So that's what we are talking about, that's what we are focusing on. We will see how we operationalize this, how we establish a college, which is in collaboration with the industry, more a workplace college, the focus areas. Question for me.
What did TFR?
TFR.
What does that stand for?
Total fertility rate.
Okay. Oh. That's too easy.
Yeah, it's too easy. Between 2000 and 2007, total fertility rate peaked at 2.21. 2007, we had TFR of 2.21. Now, 2022, 1.63.
I just had a question. Are we, when students drop classes and when students don't re-enroll, are we doing any kind of exit survey? Are we asking them? Why, you know, because I mean, I assume you're going to get very answers, but you might see trends there that would play into this data that you're talking about.
Possible. Absolutely possible. There are some departure surveys that have been conducted, not at MJC, at other campuses. It all depends on how efficient, how effective we are doing in doing that survey. Most common reason that we get from the surveys outside, not in MJC, financial, family, personal. I tend to think, from whatever I have known in my years in research office, there is a finance issue or some barriers, because right now, if you look at different results, because everybody is breaking their heads in California of how to get the students back on campus. Finance is a big issue. Money is a big issue. Book cost, transportation cost, cost of food, cost of college is big, is large. And if we can bridge that somehow, if you're already here, I have an opportunity of talking to you, rather than waiting for you to drop, because right now, what we do is wait and watch game. They say, you're here, I hope you touch the finish line on 30th April, I hope you would see my mail in May, I hope you would re-enroll in May, I already have you in the classroom in March. You have not dropped out yet. Yes, some of you are R24, you are dropping out of 60% of the campus. Not a large number. We have dissected that data, that's not a huge proportion, talking about hundreds out of 80,000 students. Focus is, when you are here, let's tell you, let's ask you what's happening, and how we can get you into this campus, how we can keep you here. It's a mindset change that we have to do, because our re-enrollment starts in May, our semester ends in April. If you're giving a teenager or somebody in early teens or whatever, they are getting into summer, and they're telling, now come back and enroll, versus when they're here, at the top of their mind, enrolling them with an incentive. Where do you think you would get better, Hank, for that?
MJC president, any further questions? I just, you know, there's so many challenges right now. I mean, if, on the finance component, yes, but there's also another side of that, where wages are going up, and, and if you've got the wherewithal to say, you know, college is expensive, books are expensive, I can get a job right now making $20, $22 an hour, help myself, help my family, that's a choice that some people are making as well, and putting college off to the future. So I think really, for us right now, on the recruitment side of it, the piece you talked about, getting to them while they're in high school, I think dual enrollment is extremely important, extremely important. So.
Sure is, but when we establish a, looking at a workplace college, that also get that underemployed people, that I got a job, whatever, and I'm not getting my full potential, because I don't think I can pay for college. And if we surprise Fito Lake, they, when we offered them this opportunity, they came up, and their response was... and their response was, we would bend backwards to make sure these students are in the classes. They get certified, they complete this, they committed, these are 24-hour shifts. Kids were with us, they would not be working a night shift, they would work in the daytime shift so they can attend college. And after they complete, they get $20,000 bump in their salary because employers are hurting in San Luis Obispo County, they don't have skilled people.
I think the partnership goes beyond just for me, the way I envision it, beyond just saying, providing a workplace college. But if we can get them in young, and the partnership being, you're going to look at these pool of students with dual enrollment and you tell us what you see as the most valued aspect of their education, and then they have a leg up to apply for good jobs as they're coming out. If you can put that in their head,
Absolutely.
That, to me, is a win-win, and having an educated workforce would be part of employers.
Totally.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Tran. You've got two minutes.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, board chair, board trustee, community member, and a wonderful team from both MJC coming up and Columbia College. So, the good thing is that we are doing everything that I hear my counterpart at MJC is saying. Because when you look at enrollment, usually after census is when you see a drop. And I would like to thank our faculty who do their job in the classroom, our staff, our support, because our enrollment date as we started, so that mean no student drop, we still at 2,700, and with our FTS, it's still at 743, so that's wonderful. We're moving back, we're not at pre-COVID, but we're climbing back. So that is really the work of mental health services, tutoring, customer service. So all that we've been doing is really great. So what I also did is asked Matt to dig in a little bit of the data, and we found out that, remember several months ago, I shared that, you know, our students applied, but did they enroll? And luckily for that, closing the gap with our outreach, guess what? 58% applied, 59% enrolled. So we're doing the right thing, we're calling up what's going on, how we can help you. That really went well, so we'll continue that. In addition to that, we were so skillful, thank you to our staff and our deans and our VP. Before COVID, we would cancel 19% of the session. This semester, only 5%. So we're really talking about what I call just-in-time classes. So we very, when we look at the waitlist, now we open more. And when we did our top three classes, we realized the transfer, the math, the English is very popular. So we parse it out where we're offering, so that way it's not the hard start date, not the start end date. So it's open enrollment. And ideally, moving forward for Columbia, and you'll hear me say to our team, every two weeks you can enroll at Columbia College. That's where we want to move forward, and I think that's a great business model. In term of the business model, because of COVID, we know the future for Columbia is a hybrid of online offerings, in-class, and hybrid. So right now, for sure, our online, for the same thing I repeat every time, the general ed, the CTE, but our student by far has the largest potential taking online and in-class. So then, on your mind might say, okay, well, how do they do online? It is growing, are they do well versus in-class, right? So for sure, when students take in-person, they do well. However, online is not a big gap. Actually, I'm looking at the graph here, it is a little bit low. So what is telling us is that our students, because of COVID, are getting used to getting their education online. So it is the responsibility of the college to support our students' success through different programs, through different modalities that help our students success online. So that is for the future of Columbia College, which I envision along with our leadership team, is that we need to continue with both online, in-person, and hybrid, and really help our students succeed online. And some of the programs that are successful, and we do, we have very strong apprenticeship, I'm looking at Jen here for our FIRE Academy of Forestry, but because we know technology change, and we were able to secure the grant with Google, so now we're moving in the pre-apprenticeship, which is great. How do we get you to be interested where the commitment is not there? That's one thing. We're building out our international student, but because of our meeting with Apple last week, and our grant for the healthcare, so you can envision, because at Apple, they show us this whole software of anatomy. So ideally, we want to welcome our CNA student, welcome to Columbia, CNA program. By the way, with a strong workforce grant, we're able to purchase an iPad for you, and this is all the curriculum you have for that program. So slowly, but for sure, we can do that with the Google IT support. So our team, when we talked about it, really integrating, because our students are savvy, they're smart, they know, and we need to be there and say, how we can be part of your lifestyle and also get the academic success that we need. And it's great, thank you to Chancellor Young, that we were able to meet with Apple, and they're willing to say, let's see how we roll this out. And for us, in Columbia, Sonora, can you imagine when we say, "Welcome to college promise, career in college promise. This is your iPad and this is your curriculum on", as we roll out for the different programs, even with the FIRE and Forestry, because you know, they always say, "With a hard hat and an iPad", that's where we're moving toward, and it's true, we'll show that. So we look forward to doing similar programs, even culinary, honestly. So for us, really integrating the IT in everything we do, and how do we do that it makes sense for Columbia College? But having said that, great things are happening, and I'm just so thrilled that for us, as I call it, a close-knit, tight-knit, we're able to keep our enrollment, we're able to keep our faculty, and our staff, and folks coming on campus. So enrollment will continue to move, and thank you so much for that.
Thank you, Dr. Tran. Any questions for our Columbia College president? Okay, again, thank you very much. We'll move on now to 7.2, Presentations to Student Success, Columbia College.
Our guided pathways effort over the last five years has been a monumental collaboration across the campus and has been infused into all aspects of our students' experience. Our guided pathways effort over the last five years has been a monumental collaboration across the campus and has been infused into all aspects of our students' experiences. As admissions come and go, we're more focused on student experience rather than name. So you may be hard-pressed to find a Columbia College student who knows what guided pathways means, but it is very much a part of every step of their educational journey. We started with getting our college ready for students from the moment they step on campus, with improvements to our literal pathways, with signage and sidewalk repairs by our facility crew. Next, it was a hard look at the curriculum and making sure our course offerings were clear and students knew where to start, including streamlined offerings, creating transfer degrees, and reducing barriers to completion, such as adopting zero-to-low-cost textbooks and offering courses in multiple modalities for student access. To help students identify the paths offered at Columbia, we grouped majors into interest areas and had them built into our admissions process and website, including launchpads, which are a set of good first semester classes to start exploring a pathway. And then we shifted our counseling process to a proactive cohort management model to help students identify their major and pathway to completion. With loss of a printed catalog and course schedule, counselors implemented one-page advising guides for every degree and certificate Columbia offers, complete with the requirements and how to achieve that award in two years or less. We implemented Starfish as a holistic support and communication tool which allows students to see their degree plan and even run what-if scenarios on degrees of interest. Starfish has also increased our capacity for holistic student support with an early alert tool for professors to communicate concern and referrals across campus services, including a way for students to raise their own hands for support. Admissions updated the graduation application process to be more clear and accessible to students, and we had our biggest graduation ceremony to date in spring of 2022. So if you ask students, "What's helped you to be successful at Columbia College?"
Our college catalogs, Starfish, and counselors all helped create and clear pathway for me so that I made exactly the request that they can bring.
My counselor went over my education plan with me, so I felt my path through the program was clear and seamless, and I'm on track to graduate on time.
You'll hear the bits and pieces of the efforts from guided pathways, but mostly, you'll hear students on their path to success.
Hi, my name is Brooke Nielsen, and I'm a high school student currently in a dual enrollment program. So the college environment is a little bit different to the high school. You have to be a lot more independent. And coming to Columbia College first really does help out with that transition because you're not, your hands are held, you're not dating. Everyone really wants to be here, which is a really big difference between high school and college is everyone's really enthusiastic and stuff about the classes that they're in, and they're not just forced to be there. I'm hoping that I will graduate in the next two years and then transfer to the CSE. I'm hoping that maybe I'll do a study abroad or at least travel a bit before I actually get really into that degree.
Dual enrollment describes a high school student who is also taking a class with Columbia College for college credit. If you are at least 14 years old, this is an amazing opportunity to take free college classes, explore possible majors and areas of interest, and try on the college experience. The dual enrollment program at Columbia College provides high school students the unique opportunity to enroll in college classes while simultaneously completing high school requirements. The primary advantages of participating in dual enrollment are jump-starting the college experience with transferable college courses, taking advantage of free college tuition, and earning dual credit. All these things save students time and money and provide an opportunity to advance more quickly toward a career. Students can take college classes on their own time outside their regular high school schedule or through our College and Career Access Pathways Program, CCAP, so they can take college courses as part of their regular school day right on their own high school campus. Hybrid courses with an online component are also available. Columbia serves over 500 high school students per term, and the CCAP program alone has, since its introduction in 2017, had over 85 students a year complete at least one college course, with that number growing each year. According to data from the 2019-2020 academic year, over 253 students completed at least one CCAP college course. Although the college experienced low enrollment across all programs during the onset and year following the COVID-19 pandemic, the CCAP program was able to regain enrollment growth with over 241 CCAP students participating in a college course, either in-person or online during 2021 and 2022. To date, the college has enrolled over 217 CCAP students into at least one Fall 2022 CCAP class across seven high schools, with increased enrollment to come with late start course options. This is an exciting time at Columbia as we see more and more high school students jump-starting their college experience.
I started college here at Columbia when I was 16. And by being dual enrolled here as well as in high school, I would have finished my two associate's degrees by the time I'm 19.
In 2017, the California Community College Board of Governors developed a vision for success in order to improve student completion rates, close achievement gaps, increase transfer rates, and help students reach gainful employment. Since that day, Columbia College has been working hard to implement these guidelines and help students reach their educational potential. Removing all material peaks, increasing recruitment efforts directed at marginalized populations, and developing curriculum and programs that streamline the path to completion are just a few examples of the college's efforts. As of 2021, 86.9% of surveyed students from the 2018-2019 term reported securing a job which is closely or very closely related to their program of study. 77.2% are employed at least 40 hours a week, and 88.9% found a job in under six months. Before training, the average hourly wage for these students was $14.50. After training at Columbia, the average hourly wage was $21.07. Our career technical education program saw a spike in awards earned in the year immediately following the implementation of Vision for Success, with more awards earned in FIRE Technology, Forestry and Natural Resources, and Hospitality Management. Our student success stories are a true testament to the campus-wide efforts of the entire college staff. By following the Board of Governors' vision, Columbia College has developed a clear path to ensure success for all students.
I feel like everyone here at Columbia really contributed to my success, especially my instructors and my fellow student ambassadors.
Columbia College has helped me in my journey through many avenues. I think first and foremost, I would not be where I am without the support of the faculty and staff campus-wide. From my FIRE instructors, Chief Warner and Captain Van, to the staff and financial aid and new counseling, the entire campus really wants students to be successful. I live in the area, and Columbia College has given me the opportunity to give back to my community as a first responder.
So Kim Lee is a summary of the video. So for each of the programs, we could, of work with like official information, but thank you to our wonderful Sky and the staff and team. Again, really a teamwork effort for us, and a great marketing tool, I would say. Keep me informed.
That was remarkable. I have a few comments, but who was the beautiful voice there, Amy? Beautiful. First of all, that was, that was just excellent. And I think a standard for annually that colleges should put together, such an informative piece for our community. I also think that this should be, should be presented for sure to the foundation and to the district superintendents, our K-12 at their January meeting. I mean, and I will email this to you to remind you, that an excellent bridge awareness for them. And also to the board of supervisors, if you can get eight minutes on their schedule, this is so worthy of our community's time. But besides watching firefighters put on their uniforms in what, one minute flat? I noticed it. Okay, I caught it, Shane Warner, I caught it, that was really good. But the awareness that this creates about connecting learning to jobs, because how do you win the game of education? It's, you get a job, or you go on to more education. As Shantanu pointed out in terms of education and employment, education and employment, that's the slide I took a picture of, that was excellent. But I can't say enough about this fantastic effort. And lastly, two, three meetings ago, I talked about the experience I had escorting my niece through the registration process, and it is exactly what you described. Everything about it opened the visual of what it meant to navigate a pathway. Every piece of it. So I commend you, Dr. Tran, I commend the entire staff for putting this fabulous public relations, and it should not sit on a shelf. This should go out to our community everywhere. Great, great job, very well done.
Thank you very much. And I can say, we got, we took a break, closed session, so we got to experience firsthand one of the programs up here, and that's the hospitality program for ourselves. Fabulous, from the students, to the staff, to the layout, and more importantly, the food. I haven't had a dessert ticket, so if you see me go through a sugar eye, you'll know why. But fabulous. I think that's the second time we've done that. And it really highlights just what a jewel we have up here and one of the great programs that Columbia offers, so thank you. Any further questions? All right, we'll move on now to 7.3, Association Reports. And we'll start off with our Student Senate Activity Reports. Associated Students of Minnesota Junior College, KSMJC, President Caitlin Gross. I see Caitlin back there.
Good evening, Courtress Lee and Chancellor Young. I'm very happy to see you all this evening. Here is my report for ASMJC. ASMJC has been staying very busy as we held a fiesta to help celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month. We had the mariachi there as well as handed out her shots to the students. Many students enjoyed the fun and uplifting environment. That following week, ASMJC helped put on one of the biggest conferences of the year, the Hispanic Education Conference. High school students from all over their areas attended. We started off the conference with singing and dancing with the band. We got to recognize distinguished faculty for their tremendous impact on campus. As well, students got to attend workshops to help them be more successful at MJC. After the workshop, students got to enjoy food and dessert with lots of music and fun. I'd like to thank Dr. B, Dr. Chancellor Young, Dr. Trainer, Dr. Sanders, and Dr. Wilson for joining us and supporting the Hispanic Education Conference. Following that, ASMJC teamed up with the School of Behavioral Sciences to promote democracy in the public space. Throughout the month of October, there will be also guest speakers on campus. ASMJC is hosting a booth every Monday to help students register to vote. ASMJC has been continuing flow, which is free lunch on Wednesday, where for this semester we are giving out meal vouchers for students and is in hope that we can help them during the school year. This semester, we have a cutoff of 200 vouchers a week and are exceeding the number of students to vouchers. We hand out vouchers for two hours and we run out of vouchers within the first hour. This tells us that there are so many students on campus that are in need of our services. ASMJC is excited for football homecoming this Saturday. ASMJC will have games, space painting, and fun activities for attendees to participate in. Petey and Penelope will be there pumping up the crowd as well as handing out free goodies to the fans. We can't wait to see what's in store for MJC students and ASMJC this year. I'd like to recognize, I would also like to recognize me tonight is the ASMJC Executive Officers Samuel Ramos, ASMJC Vice President, or all the way in the back. Dustin Salzar, ASMJC Secretary, Stephanie Brahas, Director of Political Development, and Javier Hernandez, the Director of Student Relations. I'd also like to thank Chase, who is a student ambassador, for giving us, for giving ASMJC a campus tour of this beautiful campus. And finally, I'd like to thank the Board of Trustees and Chancellor Young, as well as all the people who were this way in this meeting. That concludes my report. Please let me know if there are any questions. Thank you.
Any questions for ASMJC President?
I just want to say thank you for bringing the team. That's so great to make the trek up here and get a tour of this lovely place. Nice job.
Yes, thank you. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Associated Students. President of the Associated Students of Columbia College, Andrew. Were you with us this evening? Oh, it's not Andrew. My bad.
That's all right. Here is I. Good evening, Board Members and Attendees. My name is Zee Harmon, and I am pleased to introduce myself as the brand-new President of the Associated Students of Columbia College for the 2022-2023 school year. I have served in ASCC positions from Senator to Vice President since spring 2020, and I am proud to uphold this new title and provide the students of Columbia with a leader who is dedicated to ensuring that every student on campus is having an unforgettable college experience. I would like to inform you all of some of the other leadership changes ASC has undergone as well as debrief some of the events and projects we have started here at Columbia. I'm happy to announce that the Executive Board of the ASCC is now full, something that has not been able to happen since before the pandemic shut everything down. With this passionate new team, I have no doubts that our ability to accurately represent student perspectives and organize the many on-campus ideas that pay ASC, sorry, that the ASCC has. We are currently planning to attend the California Community College Student Affairs Association Student Leadership Conference at the end of the month, where we will learn about the best ways to foster student engagement, ensure equity and student representation, and how to make the most of our organization. Following that, the Second Annual Halloween Spirit Week will be kicking off on October 24th with Pajama Day, while other festive days will include Sheep Ghost Day and Columbia Spirit Day, among others. Our biggest ongoing project this semester is the Kitchen Stop Team Project, a mission spearheaded by our Vice President, who could not be here tonight, Ashley Escalera, and our Director of Activities, who could also not be here tonight, Gabriel Breuer, but supported and worked on by all members of our organization. Our goal in this project is to continue to contribute to the basic needs efforts for students on campus. In our addition, in addition to this open access kitchen located in our Student Center, the app sponsored Ponderosa Pantry set by both ASCC members and the student ambassadors at Columbia will continue to service the greater community by providing pantry pop-ups monthly. By the end of the semester, the Student Center will have received the rest of its furniture that is part of the reconstruction project approved in the spring of 2020, and the ASCC is planning to hold a grand reopening event to celebrate the center's fresh new look. Thank you for welcoming me, and I look forward to reporting back on the success of this month's events at the November meeting.
Well, welcome. Yosemite Faculty Association, our YFA president.
Just want to take it in. I'm in the back, so I can't see you back there. Okay, you're real. Very good. Good evening, Chair Garrett, Trustees, and Chancellor Young. On September 8th, YFA Lead Negotiator Jim Solomon sent District its, its options for meeting dates, and yet we haven't heard a response. On October 6th, Jim Solomon sent District its list of reopeners, and we have not received a response. My point in this is it's essentially mid-October now, and not a single negotiations meeting has been scheduled. Considering the holidays in November and the truncated reality of December, negotiating much this semester seems improbable, which places a great deal of pressure on a single semester to come to an agreement on health benefits and other issues. Before engaging in negotiations last year, District and YFA agreed to a set of gagging principles, one of which states only YCCD administrators or YFA faculty members employed by or retired from the District shall serve on their respective negotiating teams and attend negotiating meetings. This principle is predicated on a belief that this approach for only District employees to negotiate and collaborate with each other ultimately benefits our collective whole in a way that adding a non-community member cannot. District's decision to hire an outside firm, a lawyer, to lead its negotiations team is perplexing for various reasons. One, YCCD administration consists of highly educated, impressively articulate individuals with strong problem-solving skills, individuals very qualified to serve as District, District's lead negotiator. So why the need to farm out this position? Two, administrators and faculty share an important common denominator. We are all part of this, of the YCCD community. This hired lawyer is not, so he has no knowledge of context or history, nor does he know those at the table. His is a limited view. Three, lawyers notoriously drive a wedge between parties largely because they are not concerned about building and maintaining relations. They care about winning and getting paid. This decision suggests that District isn't concerned about its relationship with faculty, which quite personally I struggle with. Four, lawyers are expensive. How can District justify using public funds, taxpayer dollars, to pay a lawyer to perform a duty at which many of its own employees are more than qualified? Five, every YCCD employee at the negotiations table is a professional. Indeed, the work of negotiating can be difficult, but we are paid to have hard conversations with one another. You employ us to do so. All at the table are up to the task. When carried out collegially, this process of working through challenging issues via robust discourse ultimately builds community, our community. This move to have an outsider, a hired lawyer, lead the District's effort is an unfortunate departure from our commitment to one another, which is not who YCCD is. I conclude my report. Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
California School Employees Association's CSE President.
Good evening, Chair Garrett, Fellow Trustees, Chancellor Young. The last week of September, Columbia hosted Claim Jumper Day. It was an event that hosted over 400 participants from local high schools. Classified professionals successfully executed this event. From months of planning to flyers created, distributed, organizing logistics, campus grounds were prepped and cleaned, booths, tables, and chairs were set and staffed. Student packets were prepped, lunch prepared at Carke Park. The campus was kept clean, restroom stocked, students directed to the different stations, informed potential new students of the major's campus resources and students' clubs that were available. Activities and demonstrations were held by classified professionals. It truly was an incredible experience to feel the excitement and interest of our next generation of students as they toured campus and visited the different interest areas stations. I actually happened to be here on that day for training, so I got to actually experience it, and it was really wonderful to meet all the different students coming in through the building. It truly, so the requirement for classified professionals to take vacation hours to be able to attend the meeting today would disrupt crucial department needs and functions to serve our students, which is reflected in our attendance tonight. Classified professionals, my union brothers, sisters, and siblings, are hard workers, dedicated, full of passion, and continue to serve the needs of our students, colleges, and community. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to the Board of Trustees on behalf of CSE Chapter Four coming.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Oh, okay. Faculty Representative to the Board.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to address you. From the point of view of the Faculty Association, the successful return to on-campus construction continues apace. Feeling of community best enhanced with in-person interaction grows daily, which is partially a reflection, a testament to all the effort to maintain it through the pandemic. All the participatory governance continues, and that includes the District Policy and Procedures Committee, which, as you know, advises the District Council, which then advises the Chancellor and the Board Policy Committee. On many occasions in the past, I have praised that policy and procedure review process, which is one more reason our district itself is compared to many other districts. Borrow a phrase from the MJC President, "Our process is head and shoulders above that of our neighbors." Now, that certainly includes the Board Policy Committee, which I observed on Monday, and the Board's own deliberations. The latest innovation by the committee described by Chair Henry earlier is one more illustration. I remember a time when procedures of that committee were closed, constituencies into the public, and around the time Leslie Bates became a member, she and other members of the committee decided that was enough. And ever since, they've done whatever they can to encourage participation and attendance transparency. Now, I'm going to bring up an example which may prove challenging, and that is deliberations on Board Policy 6305 reserves. When it was last agendized by the Board, you listened to the concerns of constituencies and led the consensus that the policy needed a clear procedure, so the Board postponed. Now, the District Policy and Procedure Committee, so capably chaired by Kim, has had a first reading of draft revisions in 6305 and a draft procedure. I'm pleased to say that among the Faculty Associations, there's a growing consensus in support of the principal features of the drafts. But I have emphasized this, as far as they go at this point, the proposed increase in the size of the reserves could use elaboration as to how quickly that should happen. In the Board's last discussion, more than one member spoke the idea of phasing in such an increase in our reasonable time period. The procedure is considered a good start, but needs more development, which is a sentiment I've heard from Board members, by the way. All very encouraging, but here's my concern. There is now a time element that could affect significant new funding from the state. Depending on what we find out about our application on October 15th, the Board may need to have the revised policy in place by late February. Now, before it so happens, for good reason, the second reading of the draft has been postponed until next week in the Policies and Procedures Committee, which I'm a member. And at that time, typical second readings, a number of good ideas will be introduced. I know this. Also, for good reason, the next two District Council meetings will be canceled, and any comments on policy review will be limited to emails. Now, that can be workable, especially when there's plenty of consensus. It may work out, but then again, extra meetings may be necessary, extra efforts to make our procedure work the way it should and get recommendations from the Board Policy Committee in a timely way for a policy this important. So that sums up my concern. Now, before concluding, I want to reference what President Karaoke's had to say, laughing President Karaoke's. The collegiality supported by our Board and being insisted upon by our Board must be nurtured by all. Far from the first time, I will reference what Chair Garrett said to me the first time I met him, and this was a little while before he became elected to the Board. He said, "Relationships must be prioritized, not instead of mission, but because of mission. Anybody representing the Board must promote that same philosophy. Be capable and committed to do so." Thank you again for this opportunity to address you.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Moving on now to Academic Senate Activity Reports, Modesto Junior College Academic Senate President.
Hello, everyone. Chancellor, Chair Garrett, Trustees, thank you all for your time today. First, I'd like to start out by saying how beautiful it is today here at Columbia. I got my first tour of this campus. Lana, the Academic Senate President, gave me a tour today. I arrived early and it was beautiful, so thank you. And I have to say, I'm now looking forward even more to the future meetings here at Columbia College. The Academic Senate at MJC has been hard at work. At our meeting last week, we passed the Instructional Outlook Report and the Description of Duties for the College Skills Coordinator position, which is an important program for our first-time students. We also passed a temporary document that has restructured our Senate to reflect the new school structure of the college and updated some of our related rules and regulations. That document will sunset at the end of this fall semester, and we hope to then have our permanent restructuring document in place that will go into effect in spring of 2023. We had two items that were definitely postponed until our October 20th meeting. The first was the resource allocation model that has been operating in pilot mode. The MJC Senate has requested that a review of the pilot be done before making it permanent and that it be reviewed again after two years, since it can't be predicted what budgets will look like after the state stops using pre-pandemic productivity to determine funding. The second was Work Policy 6305 on reserves, and I share the concerns that Helen mentioned. After a robust discussion, it was decided that we would revisit the policy after the State Chancellor's Office notifies the District of the status of our COVID-19 emergency conditions of our own application, which happens on October 15th. Hiring prioritization is in full swing at MJC. And there are new processes were approved in our Senate last week, and they'll start meeting soon. As you know, MJC's Academic Senate passed a resolution to make our college into a smoking college last semester. That policy has gone through our entire governance process of the college, and a proposal for an updated policy for our college should be introduced in one of the upcoming Policies and Procedures Committees soon. The other thing I wanted to mention is just over a week ago, I was able to travel to Boston. Dr. B was there as well, along with Chad Bradling and others from the college, and most importantly, a very large group of our students were able to travel with us. Some of them it was their first time flying anywhere, so it was just a really wonderful experience, and I want to thank the college, the President's Office in particular, for supporting them in attending the NACI Conference there, the National Association for Community Colleges Entrepreneurs. Our ACCT Institute, our Applied Creativity and Community Transformation Institute at MJC, which is a part of our Teaching and Learning Center for Professional Development, we partnered with SOLCC and are working on contextualized and experiential learning, which connects our students to community partners to solve community problems. And this is what we're presenting. And this was what we were presenting on in Boston, and the students were a hit. They walked around like rock stars at that conference after they presented. And you could just see this huge boost in their confidence. Having those experiences is so important for our students, and I'm really thankful that our college is able to provide that for them. I thought I had something else, but I don't actually. That concludes our report. Unless there are any questions from anyone.
Well, I just want to say thank you for mentioning about the student experience, because, you know, sometimes we get mired down in the typical business of the board, and we always like to hear about, you know, whatever the story is. So relaying that to us is heartwarming, and I share your comments about coming up in the fall at Columbia College. So, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. I would love to get a presentation or some sort of feedback from this trip they took, this whole experience, Chad, it's a wonderful program, and I'd love to know more about it.
That was actually the thing I thought I was going to say that I forgot. So, they are going to be, there's a plan for them to attend soon to present to you guys on the trip right here.
Next month.
Awesome.
Next month, the students will be here, Chad will be here, not here, in MJC.
I know what you mean.
And you'll see them, and they'll talk to you about their presentation.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Columbia College Deputy Director, Senate President. Here she is.
Hello, everybody. I am so glad to have you here. And MJC, what a great showing, and our Student Senate, thank you so much for coming up. So, did you guys, by any chance, as you walked into the building, go down the hallway to see our beautiful programs, Cards of Study? Did you see them? They were in the video that you just watched. You saw them. They're so beautiful. These are the ones that I just went and looked, and I was like, okay, who's got faces that I know? So I'm going to pass these around, just so you can make sure that you see a few. Thank you, Ellen. Other things going on on campus. This coming Saturday at Carkey Park at 11 to 2, we're having our La Fiesta, Celebrating Community Gods, a free event celebrating our Latinx culture and community through music, dance, food, and art. If you don't know, I'm a big salsa dancer, so I will be dancing the aisles. And if you want to dance with me, just do anything other than run away from me, I don't dance with you. We'll be continuing our Undocu Alley training through our Dream Resource Center as well in the coming weeks. Faculty have been working really hard in the academic senate, even updating catalog rights to ensure that students have access to their original catalog so long as they are continuously enrolled. This is a departure from saying, nope, you only got four years, and then we're booting out. While also providing support through counseling to advise the students if a more recent catalog is going to be more appropriate for them. We're continuing our accreditation process, continuous process of improvement. Faculty are involved in reviewing documents and editing them to be more concise and clear, revising curriculum for our October 21st deadline to be in the 2223 catalog. Lots going on, very busy. We are continuing our faculty hiring prioritization process to determine which of the current 14 positions will move forward for full-time faculty hiring, one-year temporary hiring, or remain unfilled. This data-driven faculty process concludes on October 31st with a co-recommendation from faculty and admin team coming together to make a joint recommendation to President Tran for final review. Once the list is finalized, by then, faculty will begin the next step, which is reviewing some historical job descriptions that haven't gone through in decades towards a more equity-minded job description. Now, since Columbia has, and I did a little count earlier today, seven departments that have two or more faculty, that's it, only seven. Those are, it's the reading and writing arithmetic, right? English map, biochem, and then our flagship programs, HHB, fire science, hospitality management. With the other nearly 40-ish programs have only a single full-time faculty member or only a partial full-time members, a faculty member that is overseeing multiple departments. And then we've got many orphaned programs. Those are programs that don't have any full-time faculty member teaching courses in the area, but kept courageously affluent by our part-time faculty. So we've got some replacement positions. Those are recent retirements. We've got our athletic trainer, biology combo, a lot of combo people retiring that we are looking for a replacement, two biology instructors, a counselor, a combo earth science, geography, GIS, welding. And we are going to be looking for health services faculty, since our health services director has still been unfilled since the ring companion's retirement in the spring. Then we've got our either new or an unfilled position that's gone unfilled for more than two years, so it's kind of like taken back into a new, that's art. And then, all the rest serving currently orphaned programs, right? No full-time faculty overseeing curriculum or management of the programs. We have computer science, ethnic studies, humanities, performing arts, and a Spanish ESL combo. So all of these programs are being represented in faculty hiring prioritization. And these hires mean the difference between a program having a full-time faculty member or destined to diminish by the stark reality that our part-time faculty do not have the same rights or responsibilities as full-time faculty. Each full-time faculty member at Columbia College carries a heavy load of the responsibility for their department and shared governance of the college. The wisdom of faculty is also balancing these new hires with preparing for an unknown future, right? We don't know what's happening with FON. You guys all listened to Brian Sanders' report on FON. We're like, we're looking at a crystal ball. We're doing the best we can, but it's changing and unstable. We've got, hopefully, I'll bet slowly, but hopefully, rising FTEs and bringing our students back. But there's a lot of unknown effects. What's the effect of that pandemic on our primary education? The needs of students that are then becoming to college is a lot of unknowns. But the faculty wisdom is balancing all of those things of serving students here with comprehensive course offerings without overextending. So, last thing to tell you, last board meeting, I spoke to you about the many vacant classified professional positions at Columbia that are the backbone of the college. Faculty, students, and admin, we can't do without our classified professionals, and it's a temperature of the general well-being of campus. Now, some of these positions have been posted, and hopefully, at least one of them, you will see at your November board meeting for approval. I will be cheering, maybe crying, I can't decide which. I have to apologize in advance for the avalanche of work to catch up on, things to fix, the things that have fallen through the cracks while these important positions have remained vacant. And interim classified positions and interim admin positions still try to help out their old job while learning the new job, steep learning curve. I think everyone is going to be really relieved at Columbia College when the term interim is no longer part of anybody's job description. That is all that I have for you tonight. Are there any questions?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And last, the Leadership Team Advisory Council, LTAC.
LTAC.
And here's Jillian.
I am not Jillian.
Please introduce yourself.
Yes, I am Steve Amador. I am the newest LTAC leadership team member, taking over for Raylene Morad as she transitions into the vice president of destruction here at Columbia College. I would like to thank the board and district for allowing me to update you on activities from the Leadership Team Advisory Council. First, LTAC would like to take the opportunity to thank the district and the board for their support in reaching a tentative agreement in regard to the 2022-2023 salary adjustments for the leadership team. We look forward to final ratification in tonight's consent agenda, and LTAC realizes that there are issues related to compensation, take a great deal of work and dialogue, and we appreciate everyone's efforts. Secondly, several weeks ago, the YCCD Leadership Academy completed their first professional development session titled Supporting Inner Core and Self-Care. The event was facilitated, excuse me, by Dr. Jaclyn Forte and was designed to promote self-reflection, personal awareness, and maintaining one's mental health. In addition, attendees enjoyed bonding with their fellow leadership team members outside the day-to-day office interaction. We are looking forward to October's Know Your Contract event to be hosted here at Columbia College. Speaking of Know Your Contract, LTAC has started the biannual process of reviewing the Leadership Team Handbook and suggesting revisions and clarifications. We look forward to future dialogue with the district during this time. From Jillian at Modesto Junior College, LTAC would like to congratulate Alejandra Espinoza, Arnold Chavez, Jeanette Fontana, Angelica Guzman from the leadership team, all classified professionals, students, and leadership team volunteers for a highly successful Hispanic Education Conference last Saturday. 564 students participated from over 20 area high schools. There were 40 breakout sessions throughout the morning for them to attend. Topics ranged from exploring career choices to finding one's purpose, some in healing cultural identity and mental health practices. For the first time, the HEC provided a variety of food from Hispanic cultures, including Colombia, Peru, Mexico, and El Salvador. And the event even hosted a lowrider car show. There were over 30 resource tables providing guidance for students, and the spirit shown by Series High School led them to win HEC's Champion Award. It was great to see MJC East Campus quad filled with students and music, and to see MJC employees and students dancing the Booscoot Boogie on the grass. Are there any questions?
No, no, but thank you very much. I think you ended it on a good note. Thank you. We'll move on now to 7.4 Presentation, AFSY, YCCD District Chancellor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to call on the District Director of Public Safety, Roland Gayado, to give us the annual safety report. Roland?
Thank you, Chancellor. Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. What a great turnout. Thank you. While I was standing back there, I was thinking that, without saying this, I'd be remiss. I'd like to acknowledge the board, our students, our staff, our different council meetings that we have, all our different departments. It's a team effort to have this security report each year. And thank you very much for assisting the safety department and the campus to keep us all safe. I really appreciate that. I was in here last year, but what I can say is I was very pleased to see the great numbers that we had, the low numbers with regards to crime. At YCCD, we had no major crimes last year, 2021. The campus safety departments at Modesto Junior College and Columbia College maintain a close working relationship that really helps with Modesto PD and here at Columbia College with Tolome County Sheriff's Department. And also, I'd like to mention that meetings are held regularly between all the leaders of these agencies on both a formal and informal basis. Campus safety and these law enforcement agencies communicate regularly on the scene of incidents that occur in and around the campus. And that's important to mention, because everything that I talk about tonight is assisting with this annual report. And board members, I believe that everybody received one of these, so I won't waste a lot of time on it, but the numbers are good, nothing stood out at me. Again, I was pleased with it, but I would like an opportunity to speak about this, because this is something that I, when I first got to receive the job here on, on April 1st, actually, on April Fool's Day. I thought I was going to show up, and they were going to say, okay, April Fool's, you can go home now. But luckily, I was able to stay. But what I'd like to say is give everybody an update here, because it's very important, the emergency preparedness that we are doing here at all three campuses. And I say three campuses, because Modesto Junior College has an east and west, and they're two different locations. So we're making sure that we leverage our training, not only at those two campuses, but here at Columbia. And I'd also like to mention that the assistance of Glenn Cadwell here at Columbia and Harry Davis really assist with not only emergency preparedness, but also the safety of the entire community. It's a team effort. So what we're working on is we're updating the existing emergency plan, evacuation plan at all three campuses, which includes access control, cameras, LPRs. LPRs are license plate recognition. So we're working on all those things. And then for training, we're working with A.S.C.I.P. and Knowledge Safe Lives. And we're also giving presentations, and Glenn already got a head start with the Run, Hide, and Fight and putting together presentations and building evacuations. He has another one this Friday. The other direction that I think that there was opportunity with, I hadn't been able to see that there was a tabletop exercise, not only for active shooter, but also for any emergency, earthquake, electrical transformer. These things are going to happen. When? I cannot say when, but when they happen, we have to be prepared. So that's what we're working on. We're working with all, again, we're working with all three campuses and police and all our fire partners, fire department partners. And we're lucky here at Columbia, we have a fire department here. So if there are any questions for me, oh, one thing I'd like to add, sorry. Soon, board, I will have a presentation for you, a PowerPoint presentation with all the things we're doing. And also, I've been working with both presidents. I had a meeting the other day with Dr. B, President B, and we're going to come up with some dates soon to have some, like I mentioned before, the active shooter presentations and the other exercises. So thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm glad to hear you're working on training and preparedness. That's very important. Yes, just go.
So I know sometimes on my feed, on my phone, the news that I get is, you know, 10 best safest cities in America. Isn't YCCD like the safest, based on this, I mean, the happiest places on earth? Would be Columbia College and Modesto Junior College. I mean, there's zeros for three years, except an occasional one or two. I mean, there's not even more than two offenses on any one, and there's like only five total categories. I mean, truly, happiest place on earth, right?
And you're absolutely right. I won't mention the place that I came from, but we had a lot of crime daily over there, 10, 12. You would see it on our daily crime reports, and when I came here, I said, this was great. But again, I have to really say, we have a lot of opportunity, a lot of opportunity for emergency preparedness. I could see we have a lot of work to do with that, because we want to be prepared in an emergency. So thank you.
Thank you for your support.
Is Glenn still here?
Yes.
Glenn is here.
Yeah.
Glenn? So when you mentioned with the Tolome County Sheriff's Department, it reminded me of a brand-new deputy who's starting on patrol on graveyard. me of a brand-new deputy who was starting on patrol on graveyard, and he called off on a traffic stop at Highway 132 in Ucalapitas. Now, we all knew what he meant, and it was eucalyptus. So I think Glenn can start, it wasn't you, it was not you. I'm just bringing up here as reference. You probably remember that story, but I think Glenn can tell you Toolumi, otherwise you'll get a fight on your hands. So there you go.
Thank you. Remember that?
You remember that?
It's eucalyptus.
It's eucalyptus.
And we know about Ucalapitas. Thanks, Terry.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to quickly mention, since the last board meeting, I attended a special executive session for California Community College Chief Executive Officers at Apple Park. Dr. Tran was there. Dr. Badebade had another conflict and was not able to join us, but we also have Dr. Albertson joining us as a YCCD team. We had a good conversation with Apple, and we are going to be having a four-part meeting with Apple, and so we hope that could lead to some kind of partnership of either MJC or Columbia College or both. My last item is, let me end on a high note. I want to commend the Modesto Area's Partners in Science, better known as MAPS, for the Jurassic Park event that helped. I could easily estimate that well over 500 people were there. I had an opportunity to have conversation with several parents, and one of them told me that he had to make arrangements at work to leave early so that he could bring his children over to the event, and he said, it is worth it for me to make the effort to bring my children here. So a lot of positive comments from the community, very happy about the event, and of course, you had heard mentioned about the Hispanic Education Conference, which also brought a lot of community to the campus. So I just want to commend MJC for very successful events just recently. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Any questions for the chancellor? Okay, thank you, Chancellor Young. Now moving on to Section 8, action items for consent. We have Items 8.2 through 8.9. You'll recall, 8.7 has been polled for a future meeting, so that item has been polled, but with the remaining balance of items, is there a motion to approve?
So who?
I should have asked if anybody wanted to poll anything on this. I'm sorry.
Second.
Second. So motion made by trustee Dr. Melton Richards, seconded by trustee Antonio Aguilar. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Aguilar?
Aye.
Trustee George Vice Chair Beck?
Aye.
I will.
Trustee Vulcan?
Aye.
Trustee Hinton?
Aye.
Trustee Richards?
Yes.
Trustee Nicolau?
Yes.
Chair Garrett?
Yes, and before we move, oh, wait, I'm sorry.
The vote is seven zero, motion carries.
And before we move on to this item, we always want to honor our retirees of trustee Vulcan.
You know, I always say it's so difficult to replace people. I mean, it's impossible, and I want to acknowledge on behalf of the board the retirements of Shelley Akiona, who is retiring 21 years of service. She sent the board a very lovely note, and I knew we would have this opportunity to each of us acknowledge publicly how much we've appreciated her collaboration and her service to the district. Another Shelley, Shelley Circle, who, I'm sorry, I don't know, but Leslie, Leslie Gornett, Leslie, do you want to say something about Shelley Circle?
She was my mentor when I was first in Agua, like, 2002. She's just a very sweet person, totally dedicated to her students, and I'm sorry to see her.
And lastly, it's Kathryn Schultz, who's retiring after 23 years of service, and I personally want to say that her influence on me, I don't think she realizes, and she's sitting here in the audience. I've had the pleasure of sitting with her, for whatever reason, on a number of committees, whether it was accreditation eight years ago, or, I don't know. Every interaction with Kathryn is imaginative, creative, forward-thinking, problem-solving, and in praise of the work we all do, and I've never had a chance to tell you this, how each time I'm with you, you never cease to amaze and impress me with your professionalism and dedication, and I was so happy that I get the chance to tell you thank you, and congratulations. Also, on this list, quickly though, is that there have been a number of changes at Columbia College, which Lana Von Epps described, and I just want to acknowledge the ones that are on the consent agenda because they're just fabulous, and that is Shelley Davis, Senior Administrative Secretary in Student Services, Casey Folkerson, Executive Assistant, who is Miss Toolumi County herself. I mean, is there anyone Casey does not know? I ran into someone at Dodge Ridge with Folkerson on the tag, and I said, you must be related to Casey, of course. Courtney Sutton, to be Interim Director of Access Retention, Student Support Services. What a win for everyone at Columbia College, and I think that was it on the consent agenda. There's a couple more I'll say that aren't on the consent agenda at my closing remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Vulcan. We'll move on now to Item 9.1, Board Policy First Reading, and I'll turn that over to the Policy Committee Chair. If they have any opening comments, and that's trustee Hinton.
I'm actually going to pass this on over to Kimberly for the, these are first readings. We don't do a vote or anything this time, so we'll just carry it over to the second one.
Thank you, Chair Garrett. Thank you, trustee Hinton. Good evening, trustees and Chancellor Young. Before you are nine policies for first reading. Five of those policies have recommended revisions that were submitted to you by the Board Policy Committee. We have provided you some copies. I hope that you were able to review them, and if you have any questions, we can then take those questions now.
Does anybody have any questions on the proposed policies for first reading? Nope. Thank you, Kim.
All right. Thank you so very much.
You bet. So 9.2, 2021-2022 Special Priorities Update. Chancellor Young, or someone we want to put that up on the big screen and pick this off here?
These are the goals and priorities of the Board of Trustees in the interest of transparency. This is brought to a public forum, and we hope to share this with the constituents at large, and if there might be input given.
So can we scroll down, and we have this, kind of scroll down a little bit? There you go.
So it was on an agenda.
It was.
Two months ago, and then the folks asked to bring it back for identifying the 22, 23 special priorities, so. And I believe a copy is in our agenda back there.
Were you waiting for public or for board?
Whoever likes to dive in first.
Well, I'll dive in. So I'm.
I think we put too many quarters in trustee Vulcan. Now I'm just.
Only have two more meetings. Only have to separate them, two more meetings. You know, we put a lot of thought into these goals in 21, 22, because if you encapsulate them, the first one is about reserves, you know, a big picture about reserve to maintain stability. The second one is about guided pathways. The third one is about partnerships, including CCAP agreements and dual enrollment. The fourth one is campus safety. The fifth one is foster institutional culture that creates positive educational environment. The sixth one is the only one who I would say, you know, maybe it's about COVID, that we should just strike it for now, and that the seventh one is supporting the chancellor and colleges in efforts to recapture increased enrollment. I think that that should stay because we're always looking at that, but my viewpoint is strike six, keep the rest.
I agree.
I'm good with that.
I think we all share that, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Went over that kind of fast. Does anyone out in the audience have any? Okay, so there you go. Thank you, Roskiella.
Thank you.
Okay. Building delegates for, this is Item 9.3, excuse me, building delegates to the 2022 ACT Leadership Conference.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
I would like to make a motion that we appoint trustee Aguilar as the delegate and trustee Milton Richards as the alternate.
I second that. Thank you.
I think it's, you wanted a fast meeting. This is how you get a fast meeting. This is in the spirit of all and all, so we had a motion made by trustee Hinton.
I'll second it.
Seconded by trustee Margie Vulcan, and without too much more volatility, roll call vote, please.
You give me just one, Mama.
Absolutely.
Do I have to say yes?
No, it's already been done. It's part of the official minutes. You can't withdraw it.
When she asks you the question, you have to say yes.
You can vote on it.
Right, yeah. You can vote, no, if you want to, but that would look really bad when you go to get your delegate back, because we have to vote.
So my first was trustee Vulcan.
First was trustee Hinton, seconded by trustee Vulcan. We're now on Antonio Christmas.
It's only the three of them that are going.
Right.
So it's not the rest who are in the running anyway. The rest of us are going. Trustee Aguilar?
I guess.
So that's a yes? Vice Chair Beck?
Yes.
Trustee Vulcan?
Yes.
Trustee Hinton?
Definitely.
Trustee Richards?
Yes.
Trustee Nicolau?
Yes.
And Chair Garrett?
Absolutely.
The vote is seven zero. Trustee Aguilar, motion carries.
Any representatives? Well, 9.4 Personnel Consultation, YCCD/LTA, MOU. So this is on tonight for approval. Be attached, and there you go. Usually I try to explain it, but apparently we're moving on roller skates now.
That was my first one.
So this is to approve the LTAC MOU, the college district, just for transparency. So roll call vote, please.
Trustee Aguilar?
Aye.
Vice Chair Beck?
Aye.
Trustee Vulcan?
Aye.
Trustee Hinton?
Aye.
Trustee Richards?
Yes.
Trustee Nicolau?
Yes.
And Chair Garrett?
Yes.
The vote is seven zero, motion carries.
So 9.5, Columbia College CCAP Partnership Agreement, and I'm trying to look, so this is an agreement with the YCCD and Gold Rush Charter of School.
Move to approve.
Any motion? So we have a motion by trustee Vulcan, seconded by trustee Hinton. Any further questions, comments, concerns? Roll call vote, please.
You have to take a telecomment on this.
So please public, come forth and comment. See, this is what happens when you move.
We stand corrected.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to say that I am thankful that we see the list of partnership agreements, all of them laid out for us on page 92 and 104, that's very helpful, and I'm glad it's there, and I hope we continue to do that with future agreements.
Agreed. Okay. Close the public hearing and move back to roll call vote, please.
Trustee Aguilar?
Aye.
Vice Chair Beck?
Aye.
Trustee Vulcan?
Aye.
Trustee Hinton?
Aye.
Trustee Richards?
Yes.
Trustee Nicolau?
Yes.
Chair Garrett?
Yes.
The vote is seven zero, motion carries.
9.6, Complimentary ACCT One-Day Retreat. That we discuss a timeframe on the whole, the one, complimentary, that doesn't happen very often, one-day board retreat, identify potential dates so that staff and ACCT work to mutually reapply a date, and determine potential topics for the session.
Do you need a motion?
I think we're supposed to discuss timeframes, when you want to do it, and you want to put it off the last of the first of the year?
I think that's a good idea, and I would suggest that we, trusty, do a report.
You got that?
So we can propose a few dates because we need to work that out with ACCT.
And as part of that poll, find, get a consensus on what topics?
Topics.
Or a topic. Does that work?
It will.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, we'll move on now to Item 9.7, YCCD Resolution 22-23.07. This is routine customary.
Motion.
So motion by trustee Dr. Milton Richards, seconded by trustee Antonio Aguilar. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Aguilar?
Aye.
Vice Chair Beck?
Aye.
Trustee Vulcan?
No.
Trustee Hinton?
Aye.
Trustee Richards?
Yes.
Trustee Nicolau?
Yes.
Chair Garrett?
No.
The vote is five in favor, two opposed, motion carries.
Okay, we'll move on now to Item 10.1, Request for Future Board Attend Item.
I have one. I don't know if it's, it's really a question for the Policy Committee that I just want to register. I heard tonight, when we were listening to CCAP agreements on the video, that it was, you know, the eligibility requirement said 14 years old, which may be accurate for CCAP agreements, but I think our board policy allows students as young as 12 years old, don't gasp, but as young as 12 years old, to access a community college course. So I just wanted to make sure that, or lob that over to Policy to double-check if the CCAP agreement is a one of the board policy.
Wanting it up there.
Okay. Yes, sir.
I want to compliment both presidents tonight on their update on the role of admissions, but I would like to see a future date, I'd like to see more specific information about what we're actually doing to recruit students. It was good to see up there that we're ahead of Merced because trustee Aguilar and I continue to hear how easy it is to work with Merced and how they're getting more students or whatever. Well, maybe they're not, but I know you have a relatively new student affairs review that's been there about a year, and I also know that about eight months ago, you had a wonderful Zoom meeting with our local councils and stuff, but I'm not really sure where the follow-up was. You know, there was some discussion that you might send some people to high schools to actually get in there and meet and stuff, so I'd just like to see a presentation on where we are with that and what we as trustees might be able to do to help in the recruitment process, because it's probably the one thing I hear a lot about, you know, my son's having trouble getting in there, we can't do this, and I know there's a lot of rhetoric, this isn't true, so it'd be nice to kind of get that out there, but I'm very pleased with the numbers that we saw.
Yeah, we will have a Student Services presentation next month, so we'll cover those in detail. On the specifics on the Hispanic Education Conference that we had on the 8th, our largest participation was with the Series High School, 85 students with the account of that. Eighty-five students, with the account of that. Is that right, Alec? Eighty-five students?
Right.
Eighty-five. So we are working with them so that we can get them with, those are all the students who are motivated by the counselors to come here. So we're working on that.
Piggybacking on what Mill said, and maybe it could be part of the same presentation, I'd be interested in seeing what we're doing, not just to get students in the door, but what we're getting to help them stay in classes and not drop out, you know, help, what are we doing to reduce attrition rates and to increase retention rates? Because it's not just getting them in, it's helping them achieve their goals. So I'd be interested in knowing what sort of programs we're doing, what we're utilizing, what's working, what's not working, that sort of thing.
Okay, that's a much harder one because individual classrooms, what we're talking about is student intake is one thing, one a year. But once they go to the 1,700 classes, these are all individual treatment. And if I like my faculty member, my subject, my everything, I continue to be there. So that's a much harder one. Institutionally, we can do something. We cannot talk about individual classrooms. We can do institutional things, like we heard flow. First hour, all the flow vouchers are gone. That's a need.
Things like that.
Yeah. But start fees is one, but flow is a direct, we can see one hour, all the vouchers are gone. So can we increase the budget? We can have more because obviously there's a demand, there's a need. So those are the institutional activities we can do. Individual classrooms will be much more hard.
No, I, I know, but I figure we're telling people, like, and we have boot camps, right? We have things to help students, orientations, things like that.
Yes.
That would be, that's more the level I'm thinking of.
Anyone else? Okay. Comments from the Board of Trustees? And I'm going to start with student trustee first.
I was very glad to hear about the increase in maintenance on student enrollment throughout the years. I was pretty bummed out that I didn't get to see the, the news that you always share.
Oh, yeah.
I would like to see it later. But I really was glad to hear that. I also want to congratulate ASNGC and ACC for having full Senate on their end. I'm, I'm very excited to hear about the upcoming events that they have. I also want to congratulate faculty, staff, student workers, ASNGC volunteers, and all those students who participated in the Hispanic Education Conference. Because I was very happy to see all the colors, all the dances, food, obviously, on the table for that event. I also want to give out a, a special thank you for those who woke up five in the morning to get the event rolling up for the students that participated from the high schools. On a more personal note, I want to share to everybody that, that on September 20th, I officially became a U.S. citizen. So. So I want to also thank Alice, Carmen, and John for helping me through that transition. And that's all great.
That's awesome.
Try and toss that, trustee Hinton.
Hey, I can't, but I'm very proud of you. I used to do classes for adults that were getting ready to do their citizenship and they had to pass their citizenship test. So that's very exciting. I'd like to thank Dr. Tran for the wonderful, wonderful service that was provided this evening with the dinner and the music. It was just a very nice sit back. Very little talk of business at the tables, no decisions on anything. But it was just a great opportunity to get together. So thank you very much and please let your staff and students know that it was greatly appreciated.
Thank you. Trustee Nicolau?
Hi. I'm sorry, I can't be there in person. I was at a conference down in Anaheim for California Pest Control Advisors. So those would be the folks in the ag industry that basically can write a recommendation, like a doctor, on what is approved to apply to crops, what we grow here in California. You don't care about that part, but what you should care about is that Mr. Morales from the ag department took a fantastic group of students down there. I was working the booth and it up comes a couple really outgoing girls and they said, oh my gosh, we heard all about these pest ID cards that I had made with my work at the almond boards. And these students were on fire. And not only did they have this great energy, but I was so proud of them because MJC and Yosemite Community College is doing what we want, we want our students to do. They are, they are excited about entering the workforce, they're bettering themselves, they're looking at continuing, growing both their personal and professional skill set and it's just so great. So I took a selfie with a couple MJC students. I was so excited. Just shout out to all of the students that continue to go above and beyond the classroom and a huge shout out to those teachers and the faculty that helped make special events like that possible. And thank you all for, for, I can't see you, I'm sure you look fantastic, but happy to hear you in good energy with the clapping. So good job, guys.
Thank you, trustee Nicolau. Trustee Aguilar?
You're not going on?
I'm, I'm the chair, I can say whatever I want. I'm, I'm the commanding general of meetings, so go for it.
You're the boss, huh? Just one comment. Maria, congratulations. I remember mine in 1984 and it's one of the proudest days of my life, so.
Awesome.
Good job.
Thank you.
You'll remember that. I have a present rating thing on my wall, so. Good job.
I'll sit.
Thank you, trustee Aguilar. Trustee Dr. Milton Richards?
I too want to thank Dr. Tran and her, President Tran and her group for a wonderful thing. It's really much appreciated. I think the gauntlet is now laid down to the MJC president. I'm really not sure what he's going to do to top that, but we'll kind of lay that out.
They did when he was president here.
Oh, that's right. He did.
He's already done it. Been there, done that.
Yeah. That's ancient. That's ancient history. He wasn't here.
And they would have killed the animal back then.
Already in it. Kind of covered everything. Trustee Vulcan?
A few things. First of all, I wanted to welcome Z Harmon, is that her last name? Harmon, who is her first presentation tonight as the Associate Student from the Columbia College Student Association. She did a great job. I also wanted to thank Dr. Tran for the dinner tonight, but to acknowledge the Culinary Arts Program, which you brought them out, we could all thank them. But, you know, as luck would have it, Alexis Elsie served my table. And Alexis Elsie was a kindergarten student when I was the superintendent at Sonora Elementary. And, and of course, you know, of course, she would land at my table. So thank you. So wonderful to, I get emotional thinking about the, you know, the way the wheel turns. I also wanted to acknowledge Vice President Melissa Rady. You know, she has really built an incredible student services department. I mean, I'm not, I don't want to take away from instruction because that's powerful. But she has really built an incredible student services department and she was back there. I just want to acknowledge her. She presented it tonight. Really has always done such a fabulous job. And then I wanted to acknowledge Erin Nagley, who I saw standing back there about an hour ago. Because I knew she was leaving, but I read her email saying goodbye to everyone as she goes off to Questor College. And when I mentioned how difficult it is, and it's so true, you can't replace people. You just bring new people on, you don't replace them. And Erin Nagley cannot be replaced. She is such a fabulous contributor to this college and what she has done to the K-14 partnerships. And, and, and her sabbatical, her presentation for her sabbatical was, was, was the standard. I mean, she really did a fantastic job. So I wanted to acknowledge Erin Nagley. And then I wanted to also acknowledge Amy Nelson. She's sitting in the audience tonight. We had a 50th anniversary of the foundation two weeks ago, or 10 days ago. And it was so beautifully, reverently, joyfully celebrated by anyone who's still living from the past 50 years of the college. And they spoke. And it was just the most endearing, most wonderful celebration. And Charles Sagerstrom, who is the foundation president, announced the foundation's decision to gift $50,000 to round up all scholarships to at least 1,000, to round them up and to use that 50,000 to round these up to, for inflation. But, but to, to acknowledge the, the, the gifts that people give in the foundation to sort of match that and round that up. It was such a beautiful gesture. And when I came in tonight, I was, I was admiring the art by Leah Curso. It's fabulous. I may be moved by one. It's that incredible. But as I was standing there, there was a young man, student from the college, standing next to me. And I turned around to introduce myself and I realized I recognized him. And he was one of the three students who presented and talked at the foundation 50th anniversary. And I thought, what a great, again, it just comes to me. Here's this student that I've been wanting to say to him something incredible that he did. I, I give to the foundation. But I took my 87-year-old dad with me that night. He lives here. I've never brought him to anything associated with the college. And I brought him that night because sometimes I have to edit my dad's conversations and I have to like stand next to him. But he went up to Jan Verhage at, at the end of the presentation and offered a financial gift, first time ever, to the foundation. And he then came back to the table and he said, it was those students. It was those three students' stories about how the promised scholarship changed their life. And there that kid was, standing right next to me. So I turned to him and said, what you inspired in one person, I'm sure you inspired in so many others. So it was a beautiful, beautiful event and here's to 50 more. And that's all I have.
By the way?
Gee, thanks. I'd love to follow Mark again. No, I just, it's been, it's wonderful to be up here. It's so beautiful and peaceful and I always enjoy coming up here. And after COVID is so nice, I, this keeps coming back to me, how nice it is to see people's faces, to see their, I'd rather see an unhappy facial expression in person than these little pictures on screens that I can't make out who's talking sometimes and I'm trying to find the right window. So it's just so nice to see everybody here and I, I, I'm just very thankful for it.
Well, just, I, again, congratulations. That's, for me, that's almost a highlight of the whole, the whole meeting. So congratulations and, and that's just wonderful. Again, a highlight for me was hearing all the different student accounts, from the culinary students to the students that trustee Nicolau met, to the ones that went back to, to Boston. And, and all those stories, that's what's important. What we do is all about making those stories a reality. So that's, that's really what I enjoyed tonight's meeting. And again, it's just beautiful up here. I don't know why there wasn't duck and peas on the menu, but sorry, but, you know. Anyway, anyway, that's it. Now, see, that's what you're going to remember, right? But anyway, the next meeting will be held on November 9, 2022. Closed session begins at 3, open session at 5:30, and it will be down in Modesto at the district office. And with that, we'll be standing here. Thank you all.